All right, we're gonna follow the meeting to order, August 10, 2021. Mary, roll call.
Mayor Paul Schalhoub.
Present.
Vice Mayor Robert Schalhoub.
Here.
President Pro Tem Gregory Freebold.
Here.
Councilmember Belrop teen Rodriguez. Councilmember Albert Pavone.
Here.
All right, if we could have a moment of silence for the passing of Ellie Cooper, Lake Clark Shores resident in July of 2021, the young age of 22 years old. May her memory be eternal. Father Peter, would you be so kind as to do the invocation and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I will, thank you. Name the Father, the Son, Holy Spirit, one God, amen. Oh heavenly Father, we thank thee for the opportunity to gather here this evening as leaders of this town. We thank thee for each and every one who is here this evening. Thou hast blessed us with supportive people who seek the welfare of this town and community. We ask that thou grant to us the blessings of a productive meeting. Let our discussions be guided by wisdom and let each one of us be sensitive to the needs of the citizens of this town. Holy Father, we thank thee most of all for being here in our midst. Let thy presence be known and give us understanding with hearts of obedience to each other and words are full of truth and love. We offer continually praise and thanksgiving for all that you have given us. This we ask thy most holy name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Father Peter. Before we move on to the approval of the agenda, is there any changes that need to be made to the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I'd request that on page three, the council pool item eight B ordinance 2021 oh five. This is an ordinance which affects code enforcement. And there is a provision in the ordinance that we are doing some legal research on right now, dealing with the hearing of the citation in front of the code enforcement board. There's a statute which seems to indicate that it contest of the decision has to be in the county court. So we're going to refine that paragraph so that we're not in conflict with the statute, but also have an ability to have it come to the code enforcement board. So we respectfully ask that we be given till next meeting to have that language tweaked and in place.
Okay. So move. Now, any second?
Second.
All in favor? All right. Agenda has been modified to remove eight sub B. Any other changes to the agenda before we move forward? All right, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Second. All right, all in favor? Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor? We have Representative David Silvers here today with us. Thank you very much for coming. Now's the time he's gonna provide us with a legislative update for this past legislative session.
Thank you, Town Council and Mayor. It's okay without the mask, everyone.
Yeah.
Okay, just making sure. Well, thank you very much for having me today and letting me give you a little brief update. Usually we do this right after session, but because of timing, didn't really work out, but we're here now in August. Really quick, we did have a special session on gaming, so I'm gonna talk a little bit about that after session. So it's gonna be a lot of data information, so hope I don't bore you. This past session, we had a record $101.5 billion budget. I was able to get about 3.5 million in the budget. Fortunately, the governor vetoed one project of mine, and that happened to be a $3 million project for infrastructure here in Palm Beach County. Can't win them all, but got it through both chambers and try again next year. There were some, if you paid attention to the news, there were some kind of controversial bills this past session. One, speaking on elections, SB 90. And as the Chair of the Palm Beach County delegation, I thought it would be prudent to have a informational meeting with the supervisor of election, Wendy Link, with the legislative delegation to just see how the impact of Senate Bill 90 has on SOEs supervising elections around the state. And what she said was kind of surprising that Senate Bill 90 is creating a lot of issues around the state, especially with SOEs in particular, that personally make them responsible for issues that come up in elections. And I wasn't aware of this. I didn't vote for that bill, but a lot of SOEs around the state could be personally liable financially if there's any mess up, any mishap, a mistake of some sort during an election. And she said a lot of great SOEs around the state who've been giving 10, 20, 30 years of their life and service are just not running for reelection. And I thought that was a little disconcerting. So I really hope that the delegation as a whole, we have members on both sides of the aisle, that will be taking that in consideration for the 2022 legislative session, especially with an election year coming up. It's not all bad. There was some good stuff that did pass. Gail's Law. Now, I don't know if you're familiar with Gail's Law. It was HB 673. That's the DNA evidence collected. It's a pretty intensive bill, but it has to do with sexual offenses. And we didn't have a basically no following of the data when there's a sexual offense in the state of Florida. And there's a woman, she, we didn't, we didn't give her last name, but she was, had, there's a, it was a sexual offense 30 years ago. She had no knowledge of whatever happened to her attacker. And for years, she always lived in fear that that same attacker could attack her at home, you know, walking out of a grocery store. And had something like this been in the law for years, she would have known that the individual that had attacked her had been in jail for the last 30 years. She never knew because the information, there was no basically database of this information. So I really do hope that this is a solid piece of legislation that can help those that have ever been, have ever gone through a sexual assault, that know that that individual, they know that if that individual has been arrested and is serving time. So that is a good piece of legislation, I believe. And then a piece of legislation that I think was important that will probably save people's lives was Senate Bill 1770. It was House Bill 1223, genetic counseling. I don't know if anybody here is familiar with genetic counseling, but it provides information and support to people who have or may be at risk for genetic disorders and providing information about how genetic conditions might affect their health or a family member. As an individual who's, has several people have survived breast cancer, it's extremely important to know that if you have a family member that survived breast cancer, the next generation may have to check for a mutation of the BRCA gene. So before this legislation, there was no licensure in the state of Florida for genetic counseling. People were getting their degrees in genetic counseling, leaving the state of Florida. This creates within the Department of Health, a new licensure. People will stay here to provide that genetic counseling to individuals and hopefully get them properly treated if they may be predisposed to a certain condition, like a mutation of the BRCA gene. Now, with regard to the special session on gaming, I'm sure a lot of people, are you all aware we had a special session on gaming?
Yes.
Yeah, well, in a few months, we're gonna have, we're gonna have sports wagering all throughout the state. And we had a 30, a new 30-year compact that was negotiated with the Seminole Tribe that will guarantee the state of Florida $2.5 billion in the first five years of the contract. Now, some pushback was, well, should we really enter into a 30-year agreement? Well, technically, we're still in the middle of a compact that was negotiated 10 years ago. That was supposed to be 20 years. So they, sometimes they get renegotiated. So we'll see what happens in 10 years. We may, may have a new compact in 10 years. But in the end, I think there's gonna be a lot of, financially, I think it'll be great for the state of Florida. And hopefully, we can put some of that towards infrastructure, like some of those infrastructure projects that we had, unfortunately, that were vetoed. As for sports wagering and gaming within the state of Florida, it would open up sports gaming to the state and would have a direct impact on the Kennel Club. Even though where you're gonna have sports wagering at Seminole land facilities, like the Hard Rock Casino in Fort Lauderdale or the Hard Rock Casino in Tampa, there's a aspect to it that will allow a partnership with paramutials throughout the state. And it also removes any ambiguity, hopefully I don't worry you with this, with regard to designated player games and if they can be removed from paramutials, which they can't. And it would allow the Kennel Club to increase the amount of designated player games allowed. After ratification by the legislature, the final step of the compact was to be approved by the US Department of Interior, which, if you watch the news today, just happened. So it's official. We're gonna have sports gaming this October. And that is, that's the legislative session for 2021 in a nutshell. Have any questions?
Thank you very much, Representative Silvers. Much appreciated.
You're welcome.
Any questions?
I was gonna be smart ass and say, what are the odds of doing? Thank you very much, Representative Silvers. Good to see you.
Great being here. Thank you so much.
Thank you. It was a pleasure.
Thank you.
Dan, do we have any questions from the audience listening in?
Not from Mr. Silver, no.
Okay. All right, moving on to the utility rate study. Joe Williams is appearing remotely.
He is.
Okay.
Yes, hi. Hopefully, everyone can hear me okay.
We can.
Yes. Okay, great. Good afternoon. Thank you for having me again. And I'm gonna keep this to a brief update because we went through in pretty good detail back in April, the result of the rate study. And here we have, we have, we have an update. We've been working with Dan Administration on getting some more current information in here, coming up on your new budget. And we'll talk about some of the forecasts and assumptions on the next slide. Okay, and so we, just a refresher, we developed a six-year forecast. We're evaluating the revenue sufficiency compared to your expenditures that you have in place between operating and capital. We identified a rate phasing plan, so we're gonna be able to phase in some rate adjustments over the next few years. We'll talk a little bit more about that. There are some updates to the pass-through and automatic inflation rate adjustments. That's gonna be in your code. So those come, those are gonna come each year as costs are passed down to you. And the forecast includes funds from American Rescue Plan Act and some new loans that are gonna be potentially executed with either the state or some local banks for capital improvements. And the new loans is one of the newer pieces on the forecast, which is included on this slide and the next slide. So really, you know, just brief update, the blue bars, the dark blue and the light blue, those are the expenditures that you're gonna be occurring each year from wholesale, from your wholesale providers to your staffing and any other operating supplies, consultants, things like that. So this is the water piece, and you can see that the orange bar going across is the revenue forecast. And the revenues from your existing rates, if you weren't, if you weren't gonna implement any additional rate increases out in the future, fall a little bit short each year on the water side. And really, this is, this has been accumulation of time going on. It's been several years since you last did a rate adjustment, and those costs have just kind of crept up over time to the point now where you're at a point where you really need to start addressing it over the next few years. And we're looking at a phasing program, which we'll show you in two slides, which is gonna help you just bring those rates up over time. You don't have to do everything all right now at one time to make up for the past 10 years. You can do it over a few-year period. So this is the wastewater, and it's the same story. What I'll point out here is that the, at the end, the last couple of years, you can see that the bars creep up a little bit faster. And that's associated with some debt service payments that'll be coming on from doing capital projects and from adding a couple of new employees associated with the Lake Clark Shores Sewer Service Area that will be bringing additional customers on. Next slide. Okay, and this is an update to the rate adjustments. So what we looked at back in April, the inflation and the wholesale pass-throughs are very similar. But through using loans and some updated information that we've reviewed with administration, we've been able to bring the additional rate adjustment column down from where it was previously. So the total rate adjustment over the next two years has also been reduced from what we're looking at earlier in the year. We were closer to 10% in that total rate adjustment column for the next two years. Now you can see we're down a little, down around the 8% level, so we've been able to bring it down. And we expect that in the 2024, 2025 range, the town would be looking at the rate study again as they're start, as you're starting to go into that Lake Clark Shores septic tank expansion project. You'd wanna be looking at this rate study or rate forecast again to kind of make sure things are, things are looking good and working out and see if we really need to implement some of these additional rate adjustments that are shown or if things have done a little bit better than expected, and you can even bring some of those future adjustments down further. And wastewater, next slide. This again is the same story. We were really able to bring those additional rate adjustment column down even more so on the wastewater side through some of the loan funding. So these are lower than what we looked at back in April. And on a typical customer, you can see it's about $4 or $5 a month for the next couple of years. And next slide, this is just an illustration of the revenue comparison. So the green dotted line has been added. This is how we forecast the revenues to look with, with the implementation of those rate adjustments. So this is water. You can see in, by 23, 24, you're kind of there at the top of the, top of the bars. And you really wanna be a little bit above, as we show out later in the forecast, so that you can generate the sufficient funds to execute your capital program and to have the funds available to go into your reserve balances. And wastewater will look similar on the next slide here. So you can see over, over a couple of years, we ramp up the rates to a point where they're above those bars. We don't do it all at once. As I mentioned before, we're kind of phasing it in, so those impacts aren't as great in the early years. We spread it out over a few years. Next slide is gonna show you the fund balance forecast. And you can see we have a minimum target there of around $1 million, growing to about 1.2 million based on your costs going up over time. This is a very strong financial position for the town. And the million dollars, you know, it's a good number for the town. It's, it's about four months of your operating expenses, so it allows you to manage some emergencies, allows you to manage some temporary disruptions in your revenues, you know, think back to COVID, things like that. And really, the town has a significant amount of assets invested in the utility. So this, this million dollars is, it's a good number to be at, especially with the amount of revenue that you collect every year and the amount of capital improvement project that you have. It allows you to, if any increases come up or any new projects come in, you can do them, and you don't have to immediately go back and try to do more rate adjustments because you don't have funds available. So you definitely want to have a forecast that maintains some fund balances. And the next three slides, these are, these are informational, they're available for you to review. These are what the rates look like today versus what the rates would look like come first billing cycle in October with the rate adjustments that were, were identified earlier. So we have the Lake Clark Shores, and then we have Seminole Manor on the next slide, or Hypolexan Village, sorry. So you have each of your three service areas. You can see what the rates would look like. And then on the, on the final slide is our, our final recommendations. And we, you know, you can read these well, so we're gonna, we're recommending that you do the adjustments that we showed you for October 1st, 2021, this coming year, and each year for the next few years. There's gonna be some updates to your code that happen as well for more formulaic approach on inflation and wholesale cost pass-throughs. There's a couple larger master meter customers where we, we've discussed this with administration on changing to a per-unit approach as opposed to by meter size. And then the last one I really want to focus on is number four, is just getting the proper notices out there for when your ordinances start to come back in front of you. There's, there's some additional requirements that will pass on to administration, chapter 180 dot 136 of the four statutes. Basically, you just have to put a notice in the customer's bill of when you're gonna be having hearings on potential changes to the actual rate structure. Tonight, there's not an ordinance in front of you, so it wasn't, didn't have to be noticed under this, this, this four statute, but for future, when we bring back the ordinance, those will be noticed appropriately. And then there's a couple other recommendations, believing that forming a team for the septic to sewer, making sure you get the assessments right and all that. So with that, you know, I've been up to any questions? It's just a brief update from what we did in details a few months ago. Appreciate you having me back.
Thank you very much. Much appreciated. Any questions? From Mr. Williams?
I have no question at this time.
No questions. Thank you.
All right. Let's like to receive a motion to allow staff to move forward with the recommendations. For the rate study.
Second.
All in favor? Thank you again very much, Mr. Williams, for all your hard work on this.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate the town.
All right. No quasi judicial proceedings, no public hearings, unfinished business. Mayor, we have the second and final reading of ordinance 2021 dash oh three.
An ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Lake Clark Shores, Florida, amending chapter 18, elections by amending section 18 dash one, Town Clerk Designated as Supervisor of Elections and section 18 dash 5B, Conduct of Elections and Notice of General Election Required to Include Town Clerk or Town Clerk Designee. Section 18 dash seven, Candidate Qualifications, Procedure for Becoming Candidate by Amending the Qualifying Period. Section 18 dash nine, Appointment of Inspectors and Clerk to Replace the Duty of the Town Manager with the Duty of the Town Clerk or Town Clerk Designee and Replace the Word Inspectors with Poll Workers, Providing Authority to Codify Providing Conflict Clause, A Separability Clause, an Effective Date and for Other Purposes.
Take a motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor? All right. Ordinance passes. Moving on to new business, this is gonna be the first reading of ordinance 2021 dash zero four, amending chapter 125 zoning.
An ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Lake Clark Shores, Florida, amending chapter 125 zoning of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of Lake Clark Shores, Article 7, Supplementary District Regulations, Division 12, Swimming Pools, to Change the Side Setback for Swimming Pools That Are Not Roofed or Enclosed to Have the Water's Edge of the Pool to Be 10 Feet From the Side Property Line, Providing Authority to Codify Providing a Conflict Clause, A Separability Clause, an Effective Date and for Other Purposes.
All right.
So move.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All in favor? B was removed from the agenda. Moving on to C, first reading of ordinance 2021 dash zero six, amending chapter 34, nuisances and noise.
An ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Lake Clark Shores, Florida, amended in chapter 34, nuisances and noise, Article 3, noise in part to delete and add provisions regarding noise caused by landscape work to revise the location where the noise is measured, providing authority to codify, providing a complex clause, a separability clause, an effective date and for other purposes.
Take a motion?
So move.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Can I ask some questions?
Sure.
Charlie and Dan, I know that we had an issue with, there was a complaint by a neighbor of loud noise, and I know that code enforcement went over there or the police officer went over there. And there was an issue concerning, okay, they were in violation, but they had three days to come into compliance. And I mentioned that at a council meeting, and I thought that was just too long a period of time because, you know, he went back there the second time. And I did not know whether this ordinance was to fix that issue or to address that issue.
No, it's not. This, sorry, Charlie.
No, it's okay. Go ahead.
No, this ordinance does not do that. This ordinance gives us a better ability to monitor the sound at the complainant's property line. The one that we deferred until next month is the one that actually gives us the teeth to address that and not have to wait.
I went back and I read it again, and then I read it again, and I said, well, let me just go to the ordinance, and I pulled the ordinance. And when you look at the ordinance, I don't even think the ordinance has a notice of compliance timeline.
No.
Okay.
The
I just wanna make sure we address that.
Yeah, the discussion with council was that we want to be able for every officer to address that issue. And so the other ordinance is giving them that ability. But we need to get it right before we
All right, so that's coming on
Next month.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any further discussion on the motion?
Nope.
All in favor?
All right.
Motion carries. Last but not least, section D, first reading of ordinance 2021 dash zero seven, amending chapter 46, solid waste.
An ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Lake Clark Shores, Florida, amending chapter 46, solid waste, section 4613, bulk and vegetative waste to prohibit the placing of vegetative and bulk waste on non-collection day when a tropical storm or hurricane watch is issued, providing authority to codify, providing a complex clause, a separability clause, and an effective date and for other purposes.
Take a motion?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Just a question. Do you think we need to define what hurricane watch is?
No, I don't believe you do. I think it's already covered in the state law.
All right, just curious, because I, you know, we took great pains, if you go back and you take a look at the ordinance under noise, and you define, and you have a, you have almost a complete page of definition. I was concerned, what is a hurricane watch? Just, I'm just throwing it out there. I'm not looking
There would be no problem including it, but it's not necessary.
Thank you very much, Mr. Schiff. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Any further discussion on the motion?
Nope.
We're not at that phase yet.
Call a question. How about that?
All right, all in favor? All right, motion carries. Moving on to audience comments. Claudine, would you wanna, you wanna come up? Come on.
I would like to see your last thing there, where you say that trash and stuff like that need to be away when it's hurricane. I mean, I have a bit difficulties here because some streets are constantly like a trash streets. And I do not understand very well why gardeners don't take the garbage with them. They also accumulate garbage on one places when they have five gardens to do. I mean, I do my garden myself. I mean, and it's very easy to work with bags, to work with trash cans instead of having all those things laying literally on the driveways, I mean, on the, on the roads. You do your best to have a nice area. And when you see that they throw everything, they come, for example, on Monday around 12, well, come Monday evening or Tuesday, you see again trash all over, big, big leaves. They don't cut them. And you have that all week, and I do not understand that. I would understand if there, there were small properties. But everybody has properties where they can hide it till it's the day to put it out. That's something I really would like.
So are you referring to debris in people's yards or when it's on the roadway?
When it's on the roadway. I think it's not appealing. It's, it flies, it flies all over. When it rains, you get all the debris on your yard, et cetera, et cetera. People throw their bags with dog poo on
In the pile of debris?
Yeah.
So
So it's really not appealing.
I agree. A while ago, earlier this year, if I recall correctly, we asked the police department to start we asked the police department to start notifying the residents when they have the debris in the roadway that they need to remove it. And the actual ordinances that we're passing today and will be addressing, uh, we pass today and will be addressing next month are going to further give the town the ability to remove that yard waste in the hurricane timeframe, as well as the other officers.
Yeah, that should be year, year around, I find. I mean, when I have big, big things, I keep them behind my edge till Sunday evening.
Mr. Mayor, I think part of her other situation is she wants some teeth put into, the bulk pickup is on Monday and then they come in there Tuesday late, Wednesday early, and then it sits there entire week.
Yes.
Correct?
Correct.
That's something.
Entire week, so.
Too, right. That does fall onto the landscape.
And it's sad because you have a very good maintenance crew. I mean, uh, the worst, no, you called it the worst management?
Yes.
Yes.
Waste management or worst management?
Waste manager.
They're, they're very good. I mean, they come on Monday, Tuesday, Friday, I mean.
Well, Friday's not for that bulk pickup.
No, I know, but I mean, you can put it in your trash can.
I understand what you're saying and I.
They're very good.
Yeah.
It's not that they don't come around. There is really a good.
Very good to us here.
I'm sorry?
Waste management's actually very good to.
They're very, very good. I mean, I find.
Communities.
Mr. Clark, have you been asked to address this issue in the past?
But the position that we've taken in the past is that we're happy that they're maintaining their yard and we prefer to see a nice, well-maintained yard with a small pile of trash on the, on the grass side of the road than to not have them maintain their yard because we go in and tell them they have to wait until the weekend before they put it out. So if, if we need to get more focused on this issue, we can. Uh, I, I'm not sure what the negative side of that is going to be.
I think it's the gardeners who are against because it's a bit more work for them to put it away or eventually to bring it away to the collection area. But hey, every job has its things where they have to deal with.
Defense to the homeowner to actually have the, the landscape companies remove it.
Uh, yes.
Which would be ideal, but.
Yeah, yes.
It's not easy.
Vice Mayor Sheldon?
Yes.
Maybe we can have a, an educational portion of our website to remind everybody that you can only put out the, the vegetation. Uh, I think it's forty eight hours in advance of the pickup. And I think if we educate more of our neighbors to that, I think the, the, the issue should be addressed that way. Well, also what Mr. Clark is telling you, everyone is.
I do understand what he's saying, yeah.
You do or do not?
No, I do.
Okay.
I do.
The.
I do, but between leaving trash on the ground, you can cut it and put it in a garbage can, for example, or you can put it in black bags.
And I also appreciate the mayor's position where he took personal issue with the vegetation being on the street. And respectfully, it seems as though the biggest offenders, uh, if I can just categorically put it out there is Venetian. And because Venetian is, that's the biggest, the widest, I think probably the safest street in the town. They put them out in the, in the, in the roadway.
I know.
Needs to be addressed.
And I call it trash street when it starts in the beginning. Now I love with it, but it's not very appealing.
I understand. And Mr. Clark has reassured me that the chief has instructed all of his police officers that when there's vegetation in the roadway, that all of his police officers have records of notifying the homeowner. So.
Well, I know it doesn't.
If there's an issue.
It's, it's the same gardener.
Follow up.
It's the same gardener who lives on the street when you come out of Venetian in front of you, that gardener have several gardens and I saw it. He, he brings everything to one place. Then you have the garden from the Airbnb and that's always there. Now, when they don't do their garden, uh, if I remember well, I had a couple of code violations when we bought the property.
You did?
For things who are not maintained.
I remember you fixed all.
So.
I would just get with Mr. Clark the next time you see something like that and call the office and then we'll get.
Well, I did it a couple of times, but I don't want to be constantly on the phone. So I think like you had now on, until I, I wanted to say this.
I am so glad that you came up and spoke, Claudine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you say your na, your full name and your address when you, when you opened? No?
Just a name.
We need that for the record. She did?
Claudine, just a name. Please tell us your name and address.
My name is Claudine Vasseur, six nine zero four Venetian Way, three three four oh six.
That's.
Lake Clark Shores.
Thank you.
Say it loud and say it proud, Claudine. Beautiful, beautiful.
Do we have any audience comments?
We have seven people that have called in and no one's raised their hand. We have a request from, Emily for Bob to bring his mic down so that we can get it in the recording and people outside the room can hear him. And we have a question about cell towers, asking if we could put a cell tower here at town hall. The response that I provided is that the location of cell towers is up to the carriers. We're certainly open if a carrier wants to come and talk to us, but so far no one has felt that this is a good location.
Okay. No other written questions, emails, et cetera?
No. Thank you.
When he says nothing, he writes it down. Okay, all right, moving on to status reports. We'll start with the chief.
Thank you, Mayor. The past month, I gave you some statistics on our five camera system from July fourth to August second. The cameras process sixty three thousand three hundred sixteen tag vehicles coming in and out of the city, which sounds like a lot, but you got to remember on a daily average on Forest Hill, you'd have fifty, sixty thousand vehicles. The officers did some in-house training with state attorney updates, search and seizure and case law. There were two arrests, one narcotics possession of cocaine and we had another arrest of forgery. Uh, we also had and is going to have the mayor issue an award, a life-saving award for two of the officers at the next council meeting. But we had a overdose on opiates up at the shopping center and the individual stopped breathing. The officers gave the subject Narcon and was able to save his life. That's our fifth save using the drug Narcon.
Hold on.
We issued over eighty code violations last month. And you also have the attachment of fire rescue response, medical and, and also accents and fires. They're attached. Any questions?
Thank you very much, Chief. We'll start with Councilman Pavone. Any questions for the chief?
No.
Vice Mayor?
No, thank you very much, Chief. I noticed in your report here that over twelve hundred vehicles went up and down Westlake Drive on July twenty sixth. That would teach me that quite possibly we need to have some traffic enforcement or observations on Mondays because on, seems like that is the, that exceeds every other day by threefold.
Yeah, I thought that was interesting. I talked with, um, Mr. Clark about that. I was, you, you would think it'd probably be near the end of the week, but Monday is the biggest day for traffic on Westlake.
Was very unique, more than double. The amount it seems. Also, Chief, I want to let you know that Officer Manic promptly responded to some debris that was blocking half of the roadway within minutes of, of me notifying you guys. So I really appreciate that. He did a great job. So thank you again for keeping the officers on task for keeping our roadway safe.
Thank you.
Much appreciated. All right, Mr. Sheck?
My report is included in your packet. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Sheck?
No questions.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much, Charlie. Let's move on to Mr. Clark.
My reports in the packet, I have one supplemental item I'd like to present to the council. I attended a, a meeting of the Palm Beach County League of Cities Fire Subcommittee on Thursday and learned that the Palm Beach County Fire Rescue wants to change from an MSTU to an independent fire district. Uh, at, at the first blush, that sounds like a really good idea because it would eliminate the MSTU and give us some breathing room on our knowledge rate. But when you dig into the details of what they're proposing, it raises a lot more questions about how we would interact with them in the future, how they would charge us and what it would take to get in and out of the independent district. So it seems as though this is being rushed. The way you create an independent special district is through a local bill. They want to do the local bill this year. Then there would be a referendum in August and our residents would have to vote to be in the independent special district or not. It seems like that referendum should come first so that they can better define the boundaries that they are going to serve. Because what happens if we don't vote to go into Palm Beach County Fire Rescue's independent special district? Seems to be leaving us an alert. We'd have to enter into some type of contract for fire service. There's a few other things in here that don't seem to make a lot of sense or haven't been well-vetted. For example, their board, they proposed that their board for the independent special district would be made up of seven members. Two of those would be the largest two cities of the nineteen that they currently serve, which would be Jupiter and Royal Palm Beach. Four of those seats would be current county commissioners. And the last seat they proposed would be for cities that they currently serve. They serve nineteen municipalities, cities that they currently serve over fifty thousand in population and that, that would rotate between those cities. When we ask what cities those were, they were embarrassed to tell us that there are no cities except for the two largest ones that have populations over fifty thousand. So clearly they haven't looked in the weeds on this and I'm a little concerned that we're gonna end up with something we don't want or can't deal with very well. So as you're talking to your folks, we, we all know that a local bill has to go through the delegation. We're, we're grateful for Representative Silvers to be here tonight. And we are hoping that we can, elected officials, we can talk with all of our delegation and explain to them that why we like the idea and getting out of the MSTU. We think that this needs to be vetted for another year and maybe put forward as a local bill in twenty twenty three, not twenty twenty two. And in front of each of you is the packet that they, of the presentation they made to us on what the local bill would be and the process to get it, a, a process to get the independent special district approved.
And what would it take for us, let's assume it goes forward, everything here remains status quo, we're in it. What would it take to get out of it? If we choose that down the road?
It would, uh, it would take a special bill.
Another local.
A local bill to get out. Yeah.
Can we attach our local bill that we've been trying to get through for the last couple of years of this bill? They're gonna, they're gonna steamroll it through?
One of the cha, one of the interesting discussions, and Charlie and I spent some time talking about this today. One of the interesting discussions actually is annexation and how this affects annexation. The, the bill probably doesn't prevent us from annexing anything, especially our, our community. But it does specifically change how that annexation gets implemented when it comes to fire rescue. So it's, uh, like I said, I think there's more vetting that needs to occur.
Interestingly enough, more than thirty-five years ago, there were eleven fire districts in the county and the county decided to take over those eleven fire districts and consolidate them into Palm Beach County Fire Rescue. Now, thirty-five years later, the fire rescue is looking to go back to being a single district, but an independent district. So they would have their own governing board. It would not be the county commissioners. So you'd be dealing with another entity. And there are some serious concerns about the structuring that they're proposing. I concur with the town manager that this would be better vetted over the next year and presented a year from now. In four weeks, all these local bills are going to need to be in Tallahassee for a review by the legislative committees. They can still be tweaked and modified, but the preliminary drafts are going to need to be there in four weeks and that doesn't give much time for review and, and modification.
Thank you, Charlie. Any questions on that topic or the report in general for Mr. Clark? Mr. Pavone?
No, no questions.
Mr. Pavone? I don't even know what the remedy would be if they bring you into it and you didn't like it. What can you do? It would be monumental to change it.
It, um, the mayor of Palm Springs is here, so I don't want to say anything that will get me in trouble. But I think that there are opportunities to look at other service providers besides Palm Beach County Fire Rescue. We pay Palm Beach County Fire Rescue just under a million dollars a year for their twenty-seven calls a month. That equates to something just over six hundred dollars per home per year. A lot of other fire fees that I hear being discussed are two hundred dollars a year per home. So I think there's a lot of ability for us to, to look at other things, which would certainly be a priority over the next year as this gets vetted to see what our options are. Green Acres just signed an eleven-year contract with Atlantis to provide fire service to Atlantis. So there's, I, I think if we looked around, there's opportunities to do things differently. By the way, the, as you will see in this documentation, the new cap on their rates would be three point seven five mil. Right now it's three point four, I think four, five and change. So they're obviously eyeing this, looking at a rate increase at some point in time.
Thank you, Dan. Vice Mayor, any questions for Mr. Clark?
Dan, is there going to be a cap on what they can charge?
That's not clear at this point in time. And again, we have not seen any documentation. We've only seen this presentation. So we don't know if they have a draft bill or if they have anything other than this presentation.
Have you discussed this with Representative Silvers? Then is he no, aware of our concern?
Two-minute conversation in the hallway before the meeting started and I apologize for making the meeting start late.
It's all good.
Well, we'll have an opportunity to discuss the particulars with Representative Silvers as we move forward. Thank you very much.
With regard to the Lake Worth Lagoon Initiative Funding Request Application that we submitted, can you explain to us what the oral defense is going to be on August nineteen?
Yeah, they're going to make me do a presentation in front of a whole bunch of people. Yeah, they're going to make me do a presentation in front of a whole bunch of people I won't be able to see because it's a virtual presentation on the merits of our project, trying to sell it and make those merits greater than the merits of the other five projects that have been also shortlisted.
And how many are they selecting? One?
I don't know that for sure. There's they haven't been clear and forthcoming in that. It seems as though they're going to let everybody get something. The question will be if we get rated the highest, will we get the most? As I put in my report, this is a great big ask for them. They're, they're usually under a million dollars. We're asking for a million seven. So I don't expect we'll get the whole thing anyways. But we're taking every opportunity to get every nickel we can for our projects.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Moving on now to council comments.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
If I may interrupt.
Sure.
James Niceley has raised his hand. Are you in the mood to take a?
Absolutely. What is Mr. Niceley asking? Or are you gonna put him on live?
We're gonna put him online.
Fantastic.
Sorry, I, I apologize for not asking my question prior to this. I was trying to raise my hand, but I missed it. My name is James Niceley and I live at seven zero zero nine Pine Tree Lane. My question simply is, can we get the emails of the town employees on the website or is that an issue?
So we removed those a while back due to a whole lot of spam issues and phishing attempts. If you want to email me, it's pshallhoo at lakeclark.org. Everyone else is the same, the first letter, the first name, their last name, at lakeclark.org. All of our names are on the website. Are you there?
I muted myself again. Thank you.
No problem. You can, my phone number's plastered all over the place as well. You can give me a call. I think most of the other gentlemen up here have multiple ways you can get ahold of them also.
Okay, thank you so much.
Any other questions? Okay, now moving on to council comments. Councilman Provone?
No comments.
Councilman Prebold?
Okay, well, listen, I just saw something in Mr. Clark's report while I was reading this through the time. Welcome back to the COP. It's a nice thing. Have we had any takers?
We processed one and we're in the I think we're, we're, we got two. We're in the middle of the second one.
Down to two? Okay, well, give us some time. It'll, it'll kick back into, into gear and there'll be some takers in there. We'll work the way we work and we'll find out who's willing to come in there and, and do it. We do have a new vehicle, correct?
Oh, we do.
Is it marked or it's just unmarked or?
It's, it's unmarked, but we will take care of marking it.
We have some magnets for it.
So I have a, a few key findings that are kind of related to that that Chief handed over here just real quickly. Lake Clark Shore's crime rates are forty-eight percent lower than the national average. Violent crimes in Lake Clark Shores are seventy-one percent lower than national average. Lake Clark Shores, you have a one in seventy-eight chance of becoming a victim of crime. Lake Clark Shores is safer than sixty-nine percent of the cities in the United States. And year over year, crime in Lake Clark Shores has decreased by eighteen percent. It's pretty good stuff, right?
It's amazing. Absolutely. Yeah.
We live in a pretty good, safe place with a very good police department, community activists. It's all good. Congratulations, Chief. Your hard work is paying off and the officers are present. They are around. I do hear people saying this and that. They also have their curtains drawn. That's why they don't see them driving around. Said if you get out there and you see, so Claudine, you're nice and safe. Even if they can see you from the park, you're nice and safe. Just one other quick item is we're coming into the, the budget process next month, which will have two meetings and everything. I know you have your work cut out for you. I feel like we're in good shape. The, the rate study is looking good. We're in a solid position. I see we have a few new hiries and Eliza's been moved over. That'll be an asset for them, correct? From what we understand. So that's good. This is a great community. We're all here, all of us council members up here. I know we all love this place. We give our heart and souls to it. We'll be going up tomorrow, the council will, to the League of Cities Conference. Even in the midst of this pandemic, we're still gonna go. It's time to reestablish our relationships, get to know our new council in Lake Worth, see where we're at with that project and make them our friends and help them understand what we want. Part of the problem is, is you all saw that report that's come out regarding the the state of our planet. Now, as you all know, I like to fish and dive and do all this sort of stuff. And I've just returned from different, several different locations with different recreations that people like to do. And it it really concerns me, the amount of garbage that's in our oceans, even right here in our own backyard. It's unbelievable. I, I don't get it. I don't get people who throw that in there when it's so simple. We've talked about different things with just people that I talked to at beaches and other municipalities. And this all plays into building our relationships with our coastal friends. I'm on the environmental committee. I can tell you right now, our number one thing will be water quality, water quantity. It always has been. It probably always will be. You see the algae being increased. We're predominantly a waterfront community here. We really need to, everybody do our part to help people understand how important this really is, just from a variety of aspects. And it's not too late. It's not too late for our future children, our grandchildren, for us. Because I do enjoy all of that stuff responsibly. And I have taught my children, I'm teaching my grandchildren how you do it and how you do it right. So it's sustainable. So everybody, let's do our part and we should be good to go. That's it.
I like it. Thank you. Vice Mayor Schallhoub?
Good evening, everybody. Some interesting news. My family will tell you, I'm probably a technical dweeb when it comes to all this technology. And how I handle myself sometimes scares because I don't know what the heck I'm doing. But I did notice on Facebook that there were some concerns about the garbage was not picked up on Friday. And so I responded saying, you know, they didn't pick up mine either. So with that in mind, I reached out to waste management personally and I said, did I offend anybody? And so I immediately received a response apologizing. And they indicated that they would come by on Saturday and pick up the trash that they missed on Friday. So then I put my phone number out there if anybody had any issue to call me and, and resident did. And so I went over to Wellesley and they missed all of Wellesley. And I noticed that they missed also Laurel Lane. So I reached back out to waste management and their response was, again, they apologized profusely. And they said that COVID has had issue, they've had issues with COVID with regarding their drivers. And I'll just leave it at that. And then they've had to pick up new drivers and they're unfamiliar with Lake Clark Shore. So obviously that compounded the issue. So I reached out on, that was on Sunday and I went, I was reassured that they would take care of everything immediately. On my way home Monday night, they picked up, I went through Wellesley, not Wellesley, the estates, I apologize, the estates. And they got all the garbage. So that's good. Little did I know that on Westlake, they had missed it completely. And I was concerned, why did they pick up mine? Because I'm at the end of, of Westlake and they missed all of Westlake. So that's the issue there. So then some residents called me and said, well, why is the phone number I can call to complain? I'm going, yeah, Dan, what can we do about giving, sitting down with waste management to say, hey, look, if you missed it, can we pick up the phone and call you and let you come and pick up the, do a, you know, a do-over? Because most of the time I think we're going to be closed. And so that was an issue there. And I said, I'll look into it. And then they said, well, if they've missed everybody, why don't you call us and let us know? And well, that's a code red type of reverse contact. But I would suggest if we can meet with waste management and say, look, give us a number we can call. Our, our residents can call to say, hey, look, you missed us. And I know there's issue with vegetation being picked up and being missed and it's out there for three and four days. So again, that's an issue that we're going to address with waste management. So that's the big part there. Now, some good news. Mr. Clark and I met with the mayor of Lake Worth Beach this past week and moving forward in a positive direction for the, the Blue Way Trail. And that's, that's encouraging. As you all know, there's new leadership in the Lake Worth Beach. And when we sat down with the mayor, we shared with her the research that we've had. And we are encouraged at a positive and that they want to be involved in this process as much as we are involved. And it's thirty to forty-five days to try and, and see if we can bring this on their agenda so that they can get behind our project. If you will recall, the project on the intercoastal access has been bantered about on social media for a long time. And COVID, you know, put a big dent in our ability to advance the project. And also the, when I say COVID, that's the, the funding dollars that are available for the project. So we're very hopeful. It's not a, something that we're going to abandon. We're going to, we believe, form a strategic partnership with the city of Lake Worth Beach and move forward for that development. So stay tuned, keep your fingers crossed. And if you know anybody in Lake Worth, reach out to them and tell them to support the, the initiative. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I want to extend an appreciation here in providing us with legislative update, but also supporting our appropriation request for the next session for the six hundred thousand dollars for the Pine Tree Bridge project. It's been a significant project that we've had on our agenda for a number of years. Coming session to help us with the funding for that. I also want to thank Mayor Bev Smith from Palm Springs for joining us today and spending her time at our meeting. Always a pleasure to see you and have you here. We are leaving tomorrow. I'm leaving tomorrow along with Greg and Bob over here. So we're going to be up there with Dan, League of Cities, all the way through Friday. I'll give you, we will all give you a respective update from our various committees. At that time, we've been working on those the last two months. All right, as relates to the Lake Worth, or the, sorry, the C fifty-one canal boat lift project, want everybody to appreciate that a lot of moving parts here. Everyone on this council has been working in one way, shape or form to have this project continue to move forward, even if it's slowly over the last ten years. At least for those who were on the council for ten years, for me, it's been the last five years. That being said, so much has to be done in order to make this project happen because it's so large and so many moving parts. Rest assured that the members of this council are constantly working on finding ways to make it happen. And one step at a time, every victory is a small victory until the whole project is completed. So that's it. I'll take a motion. Second?
Let it be done.
Thank you.
Representative Silvers, thanks. It's, I really appreciate you coming.